Okay, you can go now.
Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Cambridge City Council here on May 12th, 2025 at the Cambridge City Hall. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. Gene, could you lead us in that, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you have the consent agenda before you?
I'll make a motion to approve the current agenda, approve the minutes of the regular meeting from April 14th, 2025, and approve the payment bill.
Second. It's been moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Motion carries. Item two, eco engineers report.
To the mayor and council, please see attached engineering status report for, I should say, May 12th, sorry, of this year. I'm sure there's only two items in today's agenda, which are both on page five. Wastewater system, any IPDS permit discharge and permitting planning and water system. Item number 24 on the IPDS discharge permit. And also is the same as item number 10 on the water system. DEQ released the draft intended use plan, IUP, in rankings on May 5th. And they're both for, open for public comment through the 16th, which is Friday. Cambridge ranked 11 out of 47 on the wastewater projects. And Cambridge ranked 37 out of 56 on the water projects. That's all for you, mayor and council.
Does that mean we struck out?
There was, it's very competitive. They funded a lot of water projects and they only funded three wastewater projects that are huge. So those still suck all the funding out. And I guess from what we're hearing, the administration right now, the current administration is handling things differently. So that's the reason why there wasn't a lot of funding, the Trump administration.
So all the money's been doged? Is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm. There wasn't a lot of funding. There is, there is, there's other options, already funding, but that one is on the same path too. Not a lot of funding.
But it does show that we've been trying, so hopefully that keeps DEQ off of our backs.
Yeah. Does council have any questions for Robert?
Yeah, can you find some more?
We'll keep our eyes out for other funding options as well. Like you mentioned, the positive thing is that the city's demonstrating the, they're being proactive on looking, seeking funding, especially with the requirements that DEQ has and all that stuff. That's our recommendation is to keep applying for funding, that way DEQ is happy.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Robert.
Thank you, mayor.
Item three, Idaho Jim Grant resolution.
Okay, looking more into the Idaho Jim Grant, as was talked about at last month's meeting, it requires a resolution by the council. And so that's what's in your packet. And the Jim Grant requires a 20% match. And so it, I talked to Jerry Miller with the Idaho Department of Commerce, and he said that this project looked like a very favorable type one to apply for. He encouraged us to apply for it after I told him the situation. And the next round of applications have to be in, I think sometime the second week of June. So we've got to, Cory and I have been working on trying to get some of the grant information. We're required to have a little bit of engineering too. And we're trying to work with JUB Engineering to try to get it as minimized as possible. But that will be able to be part of the grant funds and stuff. And so in the actual resolution, it's a template that they had. And then I also added that Blake Sinclair will provide a 20% match for the project, as we talked about last meeting, that it would provide the match. So the maximum we need to be applying for is 50,000. We don't have a number specific yet. We're trying to decide. Jerry had told me that we had to have a cost estimate. The guy Cory just talked to didn't say anything about a cost estimate, so we don't know if we have to go off by that or if we can go off by our own estimates. And then it'll be under the new bidding requirements and stuff, so it doesn't have to go to formal bidding or semi-formal bidding.
Okay.
So anyway, if you're interested in moving forward with the Jim Grant.
Do we wait or do we wait till the numbers are accurate or just?
This just says a 20% match. There's no specific number. So if the numbers come in, you know, whatever it comes in, it's going to be 20% of it. But it's going to be too tied up. I've only got like two days or something after our next meeting to be able to have things in. So that's why I thought we better do the resolution now.
Unless you guys want to do a special meeting like Thursday before House Canyon Days.
Break out the resolution.
Oh, Gene, it's your turn.
It's your turn. Resolution. Want to borrow my sheet? I told you, you borrow mine. Can't remember how to do it.
You have one in there? Instead of a number, it just has a title.
Motion to introduce and read the resolution number. So we'll just have a resolution for Idaho Jim Grant. Motions. Make a motion to.
I need that second line.
The who?
Second one. By title only, under suspension of rules and regulations. This one right here.
By title only, suspension of rules and regulations. Make a motion.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Will you roll call vote?
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Councilmember Platt? Read.
Motion to suspend the rule?
No.
Bottom one.
Read resolution.
Resume this section. Okay. Motion to pass ordinance?
No, we're right above that.
What's it at? Ordinance, Idaho Jim Grant.
It's in your packet.
It's in your packet.
And I need it by the last in parentheses stated on the other paper. Cory, read it. Gene? Gene, you need to say that last part in parentheses if you're, if we're doing it tonight on the other paper. At the end of that sentence. What's at the end of that sentence? In parentheses.
Resolution. By title only. Motion to pass the ordinance under suspension of rules and regulations?
No, it's a, it's a resolution.
Yeah, and we got to go back up to reading it. Do you want to help him, Cory?
Right here. Resolution, Idaho Jim Grant by title only.
Yeah, I just see.
Resolution by Jim Grant, title only.
And he's going to read the whole resolution, right?
No, because it's by title only, so only the whereas is.
So then on the?
The resolution.
Read the whereas. Where is? City, city council of the city of Cambridge is interested in economic health of the community and its citizens. And whereas the city council of the city of Cambridge wishes to support and encourage appropriate efforts within the community that promote economic development in this community of economic well-being of its citizenry. And whereas the Idaho Department of Commerce is offering a program specially designed to help rural Idaho communities implement economic development strategies and projects. Whereas this program is entitled to Idaho Jim Grant Program. Now therefore, it be resolved that the city of Cambridge provides.
No, you don't need to read anymore. You just, that's the title.
Okay.
So just go to the next section on the other page. Just the bottom.
Just the bottom section.
Motion to pass. Motion to pass ordinance?
Resolution.
Or a resolution, Idaho Jim Grant. Rules and regulations under reading by title only. Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All in favor?
Nope.
No? Roll call, sorry.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Councilmember Platt?
Aye.
Okay, item four, Cambridge Historic Preservation Commission bylaws. And you said the museum part of it's not?
Yeah, they would like to wait on the museum committee bylaws because SHPO was wanting to review them before they were submitted for final approval. So we'll do that next month, hopefully. But I believe the Historic Preservation Commission bylaws are ready. They're the ones we've been talking about the last few months.
So does anybody have any, any questions on those bylaws?
Well, I have them. All right, I'll make a motion for the Cambridge Historic Preservation Commission bylaws.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to item five, Cambridge Comprehensive Plan, Proposed Updates to Chapter Three, Chapter Four, and Chapter Five. We've been going through that for the last couple of votes. Is there any questions on any of that?
Nope. Is everybody happy with it?
Mayor?
Yes.
As far as those comprehensive plan updates, the land use one, chapter five, requires a resolution. And so we wanted to wait until after the public hearing in case there was any input or input you wanted to consider and changes before we drew up that resolution. So we won't be able to pass that section. So we can either pass the other two sections or we can just do it all next month when we have the resolution.
What would the council like to do?
Whatever everybody wants to do. What would you prefer us to do?
Wait until next month.
Yeah, we'll wait till next month.
So we table that item?
Table that.
We need a motion to table that? Okay, item six, ordinance number four dash 2025, Development Agreement.
You want to talk about it? Everybody good with it?
Can you talk about it? Seriously?
Go ahead.
What changes did we make to it?
Well, we didn't have one specifically in there, so this is what the attorney did a couple of months ago that we've been going over. And you would need to, and that's what we had the hearing on, so unless you have any changes from the hearing or you have any changes, it's.
No, I didn't have any changes. It looked good to me, but.
So if you're interested in passing it, you'll have to do the whole nine yards.
Sweet. Can all you people leave for a while? All right, I'll make a motion to introduce and read ordinance number four dash two zero two five, by title only, under suspension and rules and regulations. Come on, second it. Come on, second that. Yep, okay.
Del Ray, we're looking for a second on this motion.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded. All in favor?
That's a roll call.
Sorry, we got to do it by law.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. My fault. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison? Councilmember Platt?
Aye.
Or read the ordinance number four dash two zero two five, an ordinance of the city of Cambridge, Washington County, Idaho, amending title 11.
You got that last part in, right? Or are you reading the whole thing?
You got to say by title only, otherwise you have to read the whole thing.
Okay, by title only. Read resolution or ordinance number four dash two zero two five by title only. An ordinance of the city of Cambridge, Washington County, Idaho, amending title 11 subdivision regulations, Cambridge City Code, Chapter and Eight, Development Agreement, Section 11 dash eight dash one, Purpose, Section 11 dash eight dash two, Conditions, Definition, and Section 11 dash eight dash five, Content, Subsection A and Subsection E, Providing for the authority of the city council for the city of Cambridge to require development agreements for subdivisions and providing that the ordinance be effective upon its passage, approval, and publications according to law. Be ordained by the mayor and the city council of the city of Cambridge, Idaho, that Cambridge City Code Title 11, Chapter Eight, Section 11 dash eight dash one, Section 11 dash eight dash two, Section 11 dash eight dash five, Subsection A, and Section 11 dash eight dash five, Subsection E, be amended to read in its entirety as follows. That it? Perfect.
Next section.
Okay, can I get a breath?
We need a second.
I'll second that, Del Ray.
Yes.
Seconded. Been moved in seconded. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Councilmember Platt?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm going to make a motion to pass it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was leading ahead of you.
Motion to pass ordinance four dash.
We got to do the middle one first. Motion to suspend the rules and regulations and waive the.
Yeah, I'm ahead of you now. All right, make a motion to suspend and the rules and regulations and waive the second and third readings and vote on ordinance number four dash two zero two five.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Roll call vote?
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Councilmember Platt?
Aye.
Can I make a motion now to pass ordinance number four dash two zero two five, under suspension of rules and regulations on one reading by title only?
It's been moved in seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Councilmember Platt?
Aye.
Okay, item seven, splitting of platted lots in opposite direction of original plat. Cory, this is probably your baby, isn't it?
Yeah, this is. So from the meeting last month, we talked about the three properties in town that I know of that have utility issues due to being split in the opposite direction that they originally platted in. So we talked to the attorney today, and he's, he's working on some language in our code so that it's more specific and gives the city more control specifically over how, you know, if and how we allow that splitting of lots to be done. He referred to it as like a short, short plat.
Yeah.
Short plat, which is, basically that's what our simple division is, that paperwork, so not into more than two lots. But we just don't have anything in code that specifies that you can't do that. So, he's, he's working on some language for us in that.
So did he agree with our conversation about case by case basis concerning utilities and where the utilities lie?
Case by case always poses a problem because when you're no longer the mayor and we don't have the same council, then there's always that issue of case by case. And so it differs with every council and every mayor. So he was kind of.
We were going to pin contingent upon utilities on to that.
He's trying to make more specifics in the ordinance so that there's more things that you can check off if it meets those things. So it's not that you can't do it, but you can do it if it meets this certain criteria.
Meets all the certain criteria for that, so. Because, I mean, as it stands right now, the biggest problem is the utilities crossing each other's properties. I mean, that's where the problem arises. That's, I mean, that's what I've seen. So other than that, I haven't, I don't know of any issues with lots being split the opposite way because it just comes down to utilities. So I'm sure that'll come up, you know, many years from now. So he's going to work on that. And I think he said he'd be able to have us something for next meeting.
Hopefully, yeah.
Kind of a draft of some changes for that.
Okay, so we're in a holding pattern on that then?
Yeah.
Wasn't here last time. What was that all about?
Well, it's like if.
Remember what brought it up?
If this is a lot and this is the street.
Right.
There are people that sometime want to split them this way and put another house back here.
Right.
But a lot of times, the problem is, is the sewer line may come back through there and then they're building the house over the top of the sewer line or the water lines.
So we're just thinking of having no one come.
Yeah, so they can't do that if there's water and sewer lines in there. But if there's no water and sewer line in there and it comes in from the side street, it's not a big deal.
I didn't know if there was an issue.
Well, there's been a couple of issues, like the house right behind Blake's and the one right above it, Hayden Bowles' house, his sewer line comes through the property to the alley because we don't have sewer on First Street. So it's those kinds of things.
Do you want to tell Levi the three different ones, so he's kind of.
So yeah, so that's that property there. So Hayden Bowles' and Tyler Lee's property there on First and Hopper is one. The other one is on the opposite side, the south side of First Street. Willie Wilson's place and then Ricky Root's place, that one was split. So Ricky Root's sewer line comes underneath Willie's garage. And then the other one is down here on Commercial, next to the old County Road and Bridge lot. And that split was done unbeknownst to the city by the county a long time ago.
Problems or not creating new problems. Okay, item eight, minimum lot size for commercials, commercial zones where residential is allowed.
Okay, it's me again.
Should we have told him that there's one grandfathered in in case that's?
What do you mean, this one here or?
Because we've already approved it.
That one. And that one, they haven't got us anything more on that one, so. So just to recap last month's meeting, we had a property owner who owns a couple of properties in town come to us wanting to split some lots and in commercial zones. And our code, so we do have a minimum lot size, but it is specific to our residential zone only. We don't have a definition in our commercial zone that specifies a minimum lot size. I think it, historically, it was just assumed that you had to meet a minimum lot size no matter what zone you were in. But in going through our code, if somebody wanted to fight that, they could and they would have a likely chance of being able to do it. So that's where this one came from. Sandra and I both did a bunch of research. We looked at some other towns and cities where they allow residential uses in commercial zones. And so in all the ones, I think that we found, they have a clause where if they're going to use, if they're going to have a residential use in a commercial zone, then they have to go by the residential zone, lot sizes and setbacks regardless that they're in a commercial zone. So that's where that came from. And right now, we have one that they were allowed to split it, and one of the lots doesn't meet minimum lot size. So it's, you know, now grandfathered, it'll be grandfathered in if and when this gets changed. The other one is still pending. They haven't given us anything, any more, you know, specifics on it yet, but I'm assuming they're probably going to get it to us here shortly. on it yet, but I'm assuming they're probably gonna get it to us here shortly. And so, as far as like minimum lot size in commercial zones, that's another thing, talking with the attorney, I mean, we just, our code is really, really vague on, you know, residential uses being allowed in commercial zones, that's, you know, but we don't specify anything as far as setbacks or minimum lot size for residential use in a commercial zone. So, our attorney's gonna work on putting some language in there and, you know, structuring that so that it reads, you know, we have, it's less vague, I should say. And he referenced, was it Fruitland's code, city code on that, cause Fruitland has, like Fruitland's downtown business district or downtown commercial district, they allow residential, but it has to be on the second floor, so he, you know, our attorney understood where, where we needed to go with that to get it, so that we do have, you know, if somebody wants to use, have a residential use in a commercial zone, they'll have to go by the residential lot size and, you know, setbacks and those things. So, another one we're in a holding pattern.
Did you talk about buildings that already existed, say, if somebody wanted to take a commercial building and turn it into a residence?
So, that, if they wanna take a commercial building and turn it into a residence, then that would fall under a residential use, and so it would have to go by.
So, if it didn't meet the setbacks, then they wouldn't be allowed to do that?
Yeah, I, I think so, I mean, I.
I mean, that's what he's working towards.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're working towards, you know, and Weezer, Fruitland, New Plymouth, and I think Parma all have, you know, are ones that I looked at that all have, you know, specifics on, if you're gonna use it for residential use, then you gotta meet these setbacks, but some of those also have more than one commercial zone. So, then they get into some more specifics like, you know, council, I think they have their downtown commercial which allows no side property setback as long as the dwelling is on the second floor. And then they, you know, go into different setbacks for like not central commercial zone, you know, where allowed, you gotta have a side setback and those kinds of things, so.
We talked to the attorney just about drafting something on the minimum lot size, not anything on setbacks as far as changing setbacks unless you guys want us to talk to him about setbacks as well, for that subject.
So, cause right now setbacks for commercial zones, you know, is same as residential unless, but we allow up to the side property line as long as it meets the international, you know, building code for firewall stuff, so.
Okay, good. Does anybody have any questions on that? Okay, item nine, setbacks for the overlay zone and name of overlay zone.
Well, we talked to the attorney about the overlay zone today. He had some ideas on some setbacks such as, like, if they're a townhouse style, you know, buildings or something that somebody wants to build, then we could do a zero lot line setback, so like they would be, you know, right next to each other. He didn't really think that, I mean, he suggested a ten foot setback between, like, like what we have now.
Single family.
Single, single family dwelling, so a ten foot setback is what he, he suggested, even for our overlay zone. There was, he did talk about somewhere, like changing the setback, so for instance, if somebody wanted to build their house closer to the rear property line, right, was it the rear?
The front.
The front, closer to the front, then they could have more or less of a setback. I forget how he explained that.
They could have less of a setback and more in the back, wasn't it?
Well, he, he, let's see, he was talking about a corner lot, so what's the difference between a corner lot and not, other than a corner lot, you have access on two to three sides.
Right, he said the front and back could be either, either side.
So, yeah, so if we, if we wanted to change the setbacks to, so like, say, have a five foot setback from the rear property line, then they could have more on the front or vice versa, right? Oh, oh, so like, okay, we were talking about garages. So, right now, our code, if you have a garage attached or detached from your house, you have to be thirty feet from the front property line, which is a lot, but it keeps people's vehicles from hanging out in the sidewalk area. But for instance, if they wanted to have their garage on the backside, then they could have, you know, a different setback on the front than the rear, right? If that makes sense. It's, setbacks really come, you know, I know international, you know, building code is where setbacks come from, you know, safety stuff, fire, you know, tho- those kinds of things is where setbacks kinda generate from. So, it's a difficult, difficult thing when you don't do it day in and day out, figure out what's best.
Well, and this is an overlay zone, so it has commercial and residential in it, and so we're trying to come up with something that accommodates all of it, what's there right now and what can be there in the future.
So, then it's, we kinda need to make it so it can be different, depending on if there's a front garage or a rear garage, what the front or the rear setback would be.
Yeah, the other thing the attorney suggested too was like, if, if a property in the overlay zone abuts a property that already has a, you know, existing single family dwelling to have, you know, a minimum setback that matches that of the adjacent property, so it would be, you know, ten feet from an adjacent property that already has an existing single family dwelling on it, just to be fair per se. That was one thing that I was, you know, I could see, you know, residents being upset about, you know, somebody next to him being allowed to have a, you know, their, their building either closer or right up on the property line, and then that would, you know, I know we can't please everybody, but I don't, yeah. I just see potential problems if, you know, well, they got to do this, why can't I?
Well, you know, so we're looking, the overlay zone is, is technically a high density loans or high density area, so we need to figure out what is gonna be acceptable to us as far as the city, as far as the distance between each building or each house residence between them. And then the front, the front to back depending on where the entry is for a garage or whatever. I don't, I mean, where we're talking high density, I.
Medium, high density.
Well, medium, high density, but I just think thirty feet seems like a lot, I mean, if that's a regular residential, we're trying to create a, a different kind of environment, and so thirty feet is pretty excessive, I mean, to me.
Yeah.
Depending, I mean, the, the main deal was that we could, could create still a two-car off the curb parking.
Yeah.
And so.
As for.
Go ahead.
As for a name, we only came up with a couple of names for it, medium, high density overlay, or Central Rush Creek Overlay Zone, which, just to have a name for it.
We have to call the overlay zone something and to try to identify it.
Boise has like the historic.
District.
Historic district overlay zone and, you know, those kinds of things, so.
I kinda like the central to Rush Creek, cause that's just kinda where it is.
Perfect, nailed it. You like it? You like it, Del Ray?
Yes.
All right, done deal.
As far as the setbacks.
We got a name, awesome.
The setbacks, I mean, it doesn't have to be what's in our residential code now or our commercial code, we can come up with our own setbacks for just the overlay zone, so you should make a combination of.
Did we discuss this with the attorney today? Did he talk about how far his minimum, I mean, if we're talking about medium to high density, and we're talking about fourteen per acre? That's your terminology, right? Fourteen dwellings per acre?
Is that what we went to, fourteen?
Mm-hmm, I think so.
And so, did he have a thought process or a thought on what he felt the minimum distance between structures should be?
Well, we kinda talked about like five foot between structures, right, which gives two and a half feet on either side of the property line, and his, his comment to that was that, he goes, yeah, he goes, usually in those small spaces like that, they get filled with weeds and trash and just kinda get forgot about, you know, but.
My thought was, was, I mean, if it was as small as five feet, that you could just run a sidewalk through there and just call it almost like common ground, so both residents could use that sidewalk to repair or paint their houses or whatever, and it's more like an access trail through there, if it was that small.
Call it a shared sidewalk, so that they have their party agreements.
Well, you could, and, and, and it would just be a designated common sidewalk, I mean, so either residents could use it and not be felt encroached on by the other one because when they bought the place, they knew it was a common sidewalk. So.
Kinda like the common wall thing we talked about.
Yeah, exactly, like the common wall, but it's a common sidewalk. But, but if we go the fourteen, you know, potentially, there's, you know, I was just messing around with numbers, and I was considering that the structures would be twenty-four feet wide, so, so for example, if you had a hundred foot lot, each, each structure, if you had three structures on it, you know, the lot would be thirty-three and a third feet, and the structure itself would be twenty-four feet, which would give each residence four and a half feet on either side of their deal, so, so between the three, there would be two nine foot sections, and then the outside fences would be five feet, because if there was another house on the other side, it would actually go to nine feet, but, but I, but I thought, well, nine feet between them, that's pretty significant, I mean, that's more than five with a common law sidewalk, you know?
Yeah.
And some people may wanna have a fence between them if Fifi's running around, you know, so, so anyway, that could be potentially up to a nine or a ten foot between them, depending, and, you know, and I could, I could be oversized, you know, twenty-four foot wide could be more than what's requested, I mean, they could make them eighteen, for example, but, you know, which would, which would provide more room between them, so I get, we just need to decide what the minimum is going to be, and then if it's more, that's great, if it's, so what's gonna work, so. As council, you guys need to decide what the minimum between the structures is gonna be.
How about some contractor tells what's a good idea, cause I have no idea.
That's, that's the dilemma I'm in too, I don't have.
Or about another town, like Fruitland or someone that's done that.
There's lots of, you know, lots of places, I mean, there's lots of places in, in big cities where they did this a hundred years ago, they were just building shotgun style houses with just walkways between them, you know, you can go to San Francisco and find it.
So, in, in Boise's R two zone, which has their minimum lot size for that density is twenty-five hundred square feet, and they require on the interior sides a five foot set, setback from the buildings, so that would put ten feet between two buildings, but only on the interior side, on the exterior, like if it was the side that is along a street or an alley, then it would have to be ten foot.
Okay.
For Boise.
Yeah, just, Pegramon, Idaho, Gooding, Idaho, Washington County, Idaho, all their R twos are five foot property like setbacks unless you're, most of them have a, like a corner lot, and then they're going to like twenty feet, ten, twenty.
So, it's five percent, five feet for each residence then, so there'd be ten feet between them at least, which. Ten feet, you don't have to have binoculars to look in your neighbor's window, you're just right there.
Hopefully, the basements are on opposite.
Have you had to deal with any of that in any of your buildings?
No. Not here.
I mean, any other, and pay it, did you?
Yeah, yeah, I think they, I don't know what their setbacks were, but there's more than that, five foot.
But I don't have a lot of subdivision, Boise is five foot from these, so.
Can we get some examples or thoughts or?
Well, I just gave you two. How many more do you want?
Why is it on me? Can I at least make a motion to name the overlay zone, how about that?
Yeah.
Like to.
I'm just saying, get something done on this.
Okay.
I don't remember what the name was.
Central Rush Creek Overlay Zone.
Motion to name the overlay zone Central Rush Creek Overlay Zone, there you go.
Overlay.
Overlay, all right.
Second.
First.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can I make a motion to adjourn? Make a motion to adjourn?
Second. Been moved and seconded?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
You stand adjourned.
Yeah, you want at least ten foot.
I know, but I think the one, the example that they gave us. Newspaper, are you giving that up? They're thinking about, but.
Oh, they're looking for an additional one like the cover and.